Okay. Uh, call this, uh, May twenty-second work session to order. You join me for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Miller. Oh, wait. We don't have to do roll call, all right? Uh, or do we?
Yeah, we should anyway.
Okay. Ms. Miller, we do a roll call.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Luke Hallier.
Here.
John Berman.
Here.
Michelle Volton.
Yes.
Dan Walter.
Remote.
Here.
Here.
Um, move on to item number three, citizens' comments. I don't think we have any citizens' comments. Moving on to item number four, communications overview. Tyroni.
Real quick, just to frame this, just as a reminder, this is one of the things you identified during the goal-setting retreat, just to kind of get an overview of our communications.
I'm sorry. Slides, please. I know that, um, some of you are really familiar with communications, just in general, because some of you work in that area. Um, so, uh, I apologize if there's, um, some repetitiveness on things that you probably already know about us. But, um, I did throw some stats in there as, um, as you probably saw in your packets. Um, but I'll just hit the highlights and then we can talk about, um, I did get some questions over the weekend, so we'll talk about that in a little more detail. And then I have some new slides at the end. So, um, this is our mission. Um, just to reiterate, um, accurate information is what we like to put out. We like to be transparent as much as possible, and we work with all the departments. Um, and we are the communications arm for all of the departments. So that gets to be pretty busy for us. Um, and also, you know, we advance the strategic vision and crisis comms, get lots of media calls, and then, uh, create a favorable, uh, point of view. In terms of our strategy, um, I have a threefold strategy. Um, the first piece of that is community engagement. Uh, the second piece is to develop our brand. Um, and the third is to tell our story. Um, and that's what I always tell, uh, my team, that those are the three big rocks that we have. And to tell our story is really to focus on our exceptional services that we have. Um, and I always say the stronger, more credible our image and brand identity, the less susceptible we are to be defined, uh, or undermined by outside influences or bad information. So that's why our brand identity is so important. Um, our responsibilities, um, are pretty straightforward. Um, but we spend about eighty percent of our time on the resident communications piece of this. Uh, but it's all of the usual suspects, um, that you could imagine, from identity to branding. I put keeper of the logo. Um, so we get pretty adamant about that. There's a lot of users of our logo out there, um, and we try to get after them as much as possible. And there's still some users out there. Um, and then, of course, media relations and crisis comms, as we talked about.
Do you have any opinion if we got into the business of selling the logo for merchandise from, like, if we, you know, I mean, I know staff do. I think years and years ago, you could buy a Lakeville polo.
Mm-hmm.
Just wondering if anyone ever thought about doing it. Is it too much of a hassle then?
Um, we did have a Lakeville store for a while.
Oh, really?
And it didn't do a whole lot of business.
Okay.
Um, but we had people out there that we had to, um, they were selling police, um, merchandise for a while recently.
Hmm.
And it was the same group, I think, that was selling city merchandise recently.
Okay.
Sent a little note, and all of a sudden, the people vaporized. So, somebody was trying to make some money off of it, but couldn't, couldn't nail them down, so. Um, the tools that we use, this is the, the tools that we have in our toolbox. Everything from our website, social media, video cable marketing, um, traditional marketing and publications. And then we have a lot of newsletters. All of the different departments have newsletters that people can sign up to. Um, you have to opt into newsletters in Minnesota, so we have to have people sign up for them. We can't just automatically, um, create lists and just sign people up to them. Um, I thought this was kind of, um, a good slide to put together to update you guys on our numbers lately. Um, Facebook, that is all of our accounts combined. Um, thanks to PD, they have a good Facebook following. Um, so that's seven different Facebook accounts that we manage across the enterprise, if you will. Um, Instagram, we have three different accounts. Twitter, for example, we have five. Uh, Pinterest, we just have two. So, that's mostly art center. Um, Nextdoor, we just have one account, and it's the city account. And that's, um, our big, uh, big push for things that are like events or, um, ordinance information, that type of thing. Um, and then you can see the rest. And then we'll talk more specifically about our website, but that gives you an idea of how many, uh, page views, unique page views that we get in a quarter, um, which is pretty high.
Tyroni.
Yeah.
For the Facebook pages, guessing different people manage those pages, depending on the department that they're representing.
Sort of, yeah. Yeah.
Is there a policy or set of standards that they're all following to ensure that the voice is consistent with the brand?
Um, yes. Um, we kind of oversee that. Um, and we, we do for the website as well. Different departments have access to those things. And then we try to, um, with the website, for example, we review things before we hit publish on them. Um, for Facebook, um, everybody sort of has, like, the police department ha- runs their own. Um, and then we have some basic rules that we abide by. We do not hide comments. Um, we, um, uh, we don't block users because of First Amendment rights. So we do have sort of, um, in terms of speaking as one voice, um, we don't have too many rules around that. Um, but we have some sort of basic, how you speak, language-wise, just on social media.
Because you can't tell that, you know, sometimes police posts can be a little more, they have a little sarcasm twist to them.
Yeah.
And I think it helps keep things lighter, you know?
Yes.
Especially with the type of work. So, I didn't know if, if that was just the tone of the author, or if there was a, it's a set of standards people were following.
I think Twitter, we try to keep it real light.
Hmm.
So you can kind of hear the different voices, too. Our Facebook is a little more serious, um, sometimes. And I think you can tell when I post versus when Barb posts.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, but in terms of the website, we went through a complete redesign in 2022. I don't know if anybody noticed, but, um, we cleaned up things a lot. We tried to make things a lot more, um, easier for people to find. Um, so we went through a lot of, um, Google Analytics and tried to see what were people, you know, what were they hunting for, what were they using? And we tried to make those quick links and tried to push those things to the top. So some things did shift down, like the department spotlights. And they call them spotlights, but they're really what we call header packages. So like, um, the Art Center, Parks and Rec, um, Lakeville Liquor's a little bit different. But, um, they all have their own kind of header packages. They look different, but they really belong to our website. So it looks like they're going to their own, like, website page, but they really are all under one umbrella that we manage, so that looks like one brand, but they're different colors, they're different. They, they have control over those pages. Um, but the quick links, I think, have helped a lot. Um, and I also think our buttons at the top have improved. Our image goes all the way across the homepage now, which is really nice. Um, and we have some new photography. We used a freelance photographer that, um, lives over on Orchard Lake, had a lot of nice nature pictures. Um, we were able to request new pictures of our buildings, things like that. Um, so that was really helpful. Um, our website does offer translations of every single language. So when you go there, you just click on the button down at the bottom of the page, and it'll flip to any language, Mung, anything, Somali. Um, ADA compliance, um, we're continuing to work on that, but we have a check built into our system to make sure that it is ADA compliant. And that means colors, is it able to use, um, readers, that kind of thing. So that's really important. Stacking, fifty-four percent of our users are mo- are, come in from mobile devices. And so what stacking means is that when this page comes up, everything stacks on top of each other, so you can read it very easily on mobile devices. And then we have a whole new section on interactive maps, and the GIS department has done marvelous kind of work on that. So now we have like, um, art, uh, that you can go see in Lakeville, and it's an interactive map. Um, our park system is all interactive now. Um, what is underway? So Liquor, when they moved to a new e-commerce site, it still looks like their old site, but it's run by a different, uh, company now than Civic Plus, which is what we use. So when you click on it, it still goes to what it looks like, the regular site. So that gave us an extra header package. So we have repurposed it for community and economic development. So they will have a brand-new page, um, probably at the end of July. And it will be really spiffy. It'll look like its own cool thing. We've already started content. Um, Katie has been updating content as we've been going on. We, uh, went out today, we got brand-new pictures. Um, so it'll have all new photographs, new video, and it'll be its own cool page when it comes up, and it'll have lots of extra pages underneath. So, um, that's brand-new, and then we're adding the Casperson Boat Launch Live Video Link. So now people will see how many boats are there in the queue, you know, is it a good time to go over and launch by boat? So that'll be cool. Um, and then the most visited pages, of course, our homepage, because that's, um, you know, that, that makes sense from an organic standpoint. The Art Center and Attend Event Utility Building, so that's good news, right, Carolyn? Um, and then Calendar Permits. Um, and then the Council Page comes up as number eighteen in both organic searches and then direct searches. So that's kind of interesting, too. That never used to be very high on the list, so.
It used to be high on the list?
No. Every.
I just, as long as it didn't drop.
Yeah.
From five to eighteen, that's fine.
Uh, no, it never was, even showed up on their list, so.
Nice pages.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, uh, comes up as eighteen. So that's like, um, twenty, almost three thousand views in a quarter, so. Um, I thought it would be fun to look at a couple of our high-traffic posts. Um, one that was contentious was our Antlers Park closure. And maybe it's because we used the great big picture, "closed." Um, I think that's part of it. Um, it caught a lot of attention. It had a lot of reach, as you can see, huge amount of reach for our post. Um, our cool little garbage truck, though, we call him Luigi, because he looks like the little Luigi from the movie Cars. But that also did very, very well, and that was last summer, so. Um, and then the PD recruitment video, um, is organically doing really well on YouTube.
The free process of it for organic.
Yeah, yeah, we thought that was true. We did a Park and Rec takeover, um, and just on Nextdoor, did really, really well. Um, usually Nextdoor, you don't get a lot of, of, you know, like, likes or the little hearts. So, um, but we do get a lot of impressions, so that's, that's a good thing. And then our single snowstorm prep event got a huge amount. PD ride-alongs always do really well. Those are really old, but they still get a lot of follows, which is really interesting. Um, and then, of course, turf tips with Kelly did really well last year. So we'll probably revive that again. Um, and then just some highlights, um, and then we'll get into, um, we'll get into questions. So some highlights, um, we did the police recruitment campaign. So we did all brand-new social media, a brochure, we did the full campaign. We did a brand-new webpage for it. Um, and we probably didn't get a lot of recruits, but it did get a lot of attention. So it's a good start for us. Um, we are working on the fire transition. Um, the first piece of that is trying to explain this hybrid that we're going to. So we have a public piece that we're about ready to post. Um, we're just agreeing on some of the final wording. We already talked about the economic development website, um, supportive of some of the surveys. Um, we're supporting the pedestrian study right now, which is, you go out there on the map, and you can actually put a little sticky note out there and talk about some of the areas that are troublesome. Um, and that goes straight to the engineering department and their consultant, and that's got a ton of little notes on it. So we've been pushing that on Nextdoor. Um, Jim is retiring after thirty-three years. Um, so we have our first set of interviews on the thirtieth and thirty-first, and we have twenty-one in our first batch interview.
You're gonna interview twenty-one?
Yeah. They're gonna be twenty-minute, short, very fast interviews. See how we do, so.
Good.
We'll be bleary-eyed, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah. I almost want to take pictures of them so I can remember who they are.
That's like doing half of a commission interview.
Yeah. Um, today, um, Megan, and it's Biscay, Biscans, Biscans. Um, started from, um, she's a Eau Claire student, and then she was Lakeville South. So she's Lakeville resident, and she started today. Did marvelous. Um, so we're already really super happy. And then, um, we have a number of partnerships, which I'm sure you're aware of. We have Chamber of Commerce, obviously, Dakota County for recycling, and then Dakota Valley Recycling. And then recently, um, the people from West Lake Marion Trails got ahold of me and want to share some marketing, which I was like, great, that's cool. So we're gonna be doing a bunch of stuff with them. And then I'm working with PD on a bunch of stuff for crisis communications. So we're doing a bunch of different things. So that is a formal presentation. So moving on to the tough questions I got. Really hard questions. Um, so the first one, which was from the task force, um, can you share some progress that we've made? Um, and this is specific, this first part is specific to the census information and share, maybe sharing that, um, through social media, webpage, and the local paper. And I'll be honest with you, we haven't done a lot of that, um, for a number of reasons. Um, so first is, uh, specifically on this, on the census stuff, um, some of it is a little old already. But I'm also struggling with, um, finding ways to make those posts useful information, coming out to say, I mean, and I'm open to suggestions, but just coming out to say, like, um, you know, we have X percent of people of color in the community is a post that kind of sets us up for failure, um, because of how snarky social media can be and how many hits we kind of take, um, through our social media. We do take some hits. Um, we even get considered as a DINA, too, kind of, sometimes. Um, kind of privileged a little bit, though, you know, we'll get comments like, oh, you're in Lakeville, you know, kind of thing. So, um, these are some of the posts that we have been focusing on, um, which is some of the holidays and some of the, um, the first one is about, uh, kids with autism. Um, and we've been, you know, pushing things like that, um, and big holidays, months of celebration, like, you know, um, Black History Month or Women's History Month, that type of thing. So that's what we've been more focused on. Um, our intern, one of the reasons that I hired her, I asked this question of every one of the intern candidates we had. If you were to do a diversity campaign, what it would look like, blah, blah, blah. Um, she came back with a really cool idea, and it was called Portrait of Lakeville. And it was literally, um, her background is graphics and photography and things like that. She goes, wouldn't it be cool if we let people in Lakeville tell their own story? Um, whether it's, um, somebody that has, um, some sort of disability or they're a person that came from somewhere. And they wanted to tell their story, so we'd take certain portraits of them, not them looking directly in the camera, but do something very artful. And then they go ahead and they tell their story and how they came to Lakeville. Um, and I thought that would be a really cool, it takes time to develop that. It also takes resources in terms of, where are these people? How do we go find them? And how do we convince them to tell their story? Um, but we talked about it already today, and she's like, really, like, fired up about it. Um, so I thought that was a really, uh, cool way to start a series, um, that we could do this summer, but.
Yeah, it's kind of like the, there's a realtor out there that has similar, I don't know.
Faces of like.
Faces of.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, and I like the idea of that. And in fact, just after you do enough of these, maybe it kind of creates a mural of sorts of all of those art pieces on a big wall somewhere in Lakeville eventually. But, uh, I don't know, I know that we, interacting with more and more folks with coming from all sorts of backgrounds, so, you know, if you're looking for ideas, I think we could come up with some cool names. Plus folks that are stepping up to commission work and, um, at different committees, but.
Yeah, maybe start with commission numbers and applying to commission and, uh.
Right.
I like, that's a great idea. Cool.
Okay. Um, the next one was similar question, but talking about partnering with, um, the Art Center, about talking about our con- concert series, which I'm totally excited about. Um, Joe and I have been working, um, really hard at the, um, the first piece was to advertise for applicants. And we got sixty, um, applicants, and, um, he said extremely diverse, because he went through the applications, but very diverse in age, ethnicity, um, musical types. Um, he got it down to, he got it down to, um, twenty-two. He selected twenty-four, he contracted with two. One was a reggae band, and I can't remember who the other one was. Um, so he got a really good, kind of robust series. Right now, we're in the kind of awareness stage, so we've been advertising like crazy, just this piece of it, and branding that image. You probably have seen some of the banners and stuff around. Um, and we're using just this piece of it, just to kind of say, we have this concert series, we have this concert series. Then we're gonna start talking about, the next step is like the individual performances. So, um, he's waiting, he's got some TBD dates, so we're gonna fill those in. And then, um, I had to give him credit for the picture on the front page of the newspaper. Um, so that the, you know, for the first year of the art crawl, and he got this great big image on the front page of the paper with this great artist, who I thought was just phenomenal anyway, who does those beautiful pictures, it's hard to see. And then he's got, you know, then there was this woman in this wheelchair, and she was like, like, he goes, you couldn't have staged this better, and it wasn't staged, obviously. And, um, it was a great, a great photo, but they did really well for, um, for their first Lakeville art crawl, so.
The banner that's at Antlers right now is, is a nice, uh, look at the banner, don't look at. Can't go to the park.
I told him that was a great placement. That was terrific placement. He said he stuck out there and did it, because he was like, I don't feel like that one counts against the banner laws. It's like, eh. Don't tell him I told you that, though. Um, and then the last piece of this question was about the Lakeville Chamber. And I know that, um, that our citizen has called this an old document. But, um, we spent a lot of time editing this document for, um, the Chamber. Um, we get this sent to us every year, and we edit the heck out of it. This particular one still has Doug Anderson as the mayor, but there is a new version of this out there, because we just finished editing it, um, a few weeks ago. So I know they'll be publishing another one, but this is like the kind of, I, I don't think of this document as being old. I asked for the distribution model of this to find out how it's distributed to new residents. But this has everything that you'd ever need if you're moving to Lakeville, and they give this to every new resident, so. Um, that's one of the things that we do, um, with the Chamber, we do quite a bit with them. But the other one is, we're doing a new series, um, with Tina and the Chamber, and it's called Find Yourself in Lakeville. And it's a whole new video series, and it's mostly focused on business. Um, but this, the first video we did with them is really based on jobs, and it's Come Work in Lakeville. Um, so it's supposed to be, Tina's vision of this is, is supposed to be, um, as a CEO, bring your business to Lakeville, and as, um, people that work at that business, come live in Lakeville and work at that business in Lakeville. So that's really what that's focused on. So it's a little bit more business-oriented, but this first video is really resident.
Are you gonna use the videos on Instagram, too?
Hmm?
Are you gonna use those videos on Instagram, too, or just?
Yeah, we could, yeah. And we have our other videos out there, too, other business videos. And last, this is kind of a busy-looking chart, but it's how do we compare to our peers, cities, in terms of staffing? So we're up there on the left, and then everybody else. And, um, I, we kind of fall in the middle, which is where I expected us to kind of fall. Um, some cities are, are heavier with staff than others. Um, part of that is, a lot of cities will farm out their video groups. That's a pretty expensive thing to do. Um, I think we're really fortunate having just a couple, um, video on staff, because that saves us a lot of money, because just doing one video is really expensive. I can't imagine, um, farming that out. Um, Rosemont Farmington and Apple Valley, they, of course, um, use one staff for all their video needs. Um, but I don't know how much time they get of those folks, but. Um, and then I didn't put a DINA up there because ye gods, they have, um, fourteen.
Wow.
Communication.
Not surprising at all.
They actually have eighteen people, but I think four of those are for best staff, so, but they have fourteen.
Are there any positions that wouldn't technically fall under your purview, but have a communications role that have dotted lines to your department? I mean, I'm thinking about the Facebook post from the police department, you know? I'm guessing there's not a full communications role around that person. But how, what percentage of time are they doing communications-type work? That might be considered, you know, how much of those part-time roles are there?
Yeah.
That's a really hard question to answer.
Yeah.
Tyroni, Tyroni reviews and kind of watches everybody's Facebook posts, um, just to kind of monitor it and keep Justin and I up to date on what everybody's doing out there. Um, but we kind of leave it up to the, those departments that have their own Facebooks to responsibly post and do their own thing. It's, it's hard to say how much time each of them do it.
Sure.
A few hours a week, sometimes, sometimes it's more, depending on what they have going on.
Like the newsletter that you all put out, or that booklet, who did that for the police department?
Like the annual report? Yeah, that, that was Mara Thomas, one of our admin folks.
Got it.
Yeah. Which is time-consuming, you know, that one's.
Same project.
That one's a, uh, basically annual, so it's a chunk of time once a year. But she does our Facebook, social, most social media posts, and it's sporadic. I mean, some weeks are several hours, some weeks it may not be much at all, depends on what's going on. But she does work a lot with Tyroni and her staff, too, to make sure we're kind of on the same page as far as messaging and things like that.
Those big publications, we've pushed the departments to try to run it. Those big publications, we've pushed the departments to try to run everything through communications, so communications has their eye, look through it from their point of view. We don't get heavy-handed on it, but we at least ask them to run everything through communications, so it's reviewed that way.
But I waited though. So she did the content and I still did the design on it.
Got it.
So, yeah, it was a.
Just like the recruitment video, all the recruitment stuff was a joint, we had people involved, obviously, but working with communications.
A lot of times communications is silent partner.
Yeah, that's why my staff wanted me to underline, we work for all departments, because they were like, we want them to know that. I'm like, I think they know that, but.
Jerryl, the new report says that the franchise fees are down another $2,000. What's the total amount, do you know?
Franchise fees? I don't recall how much in, um, no, you're talking antenna fees, no franchise.
Franchise, cable franchise, yeah.
Like annually so far?
Uh, yeah, yeah, how much have we been doing the last couple of years? I know, obviously it's dropped, I mean, with court cutting or whatever.
Court shuts, like a hundred fifty thousand or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's still, you know?
It's going, it's, it's going down. People are still cutting court, yeah, but it's around one fifty.
With, uh, media interaction, how does this information, especially social media, because I, we still do press releases, but the days of, well, here's your press release and that's it, or people expect information like immediately.
Yep.
How will we handle them?
Um, so we'll try to put information out there right away on social media. So like when these guys have something, they'll put it out on their social media, we'll share it. Um, so we try to coordinate the best we can, because I'll get a lot of inquiries, you know, care eleven, I don't know why they have me on speed dial, but I'll get a lot of, I get a lot of inquiries from them. Um, and sometimes they'll have already gotten a call too, so they'll like speed dial everybody. So we kind of have to coordinate, um, you know, when we get those types of things and then we try to get, uh, release information, what we consider a, you know, old fashioned press release, we still do those, but it's in the social media type of, you know, that's where they like to pick up their information. And they'll pick up leads on Twitter, so they'll be like snooping around on Twitter and then they'll go, hey, listen about, you know, they'll send us something about it. So.
They also get the weekly updates sometimes.
Yeah.
They plant stories in there too and we pick up on them.
Yeah.
When they call me the day after, or they watch our agendas, went to start a trip, emailed me last week about parental licensing, while we're looking at that.
Yeah, they're really stupid for stories, so. But as a former journalist, it's a place to look for stuff.
Well, I, I just, one more comment, I had passed this along, this was a couple of months ago, I passed it along, I just want everyone else to hear, I was at an event and talking with a, uh, communications person in another city and that they learned that as a Lakeville, and they go, oh, really? We follow Lakeville's, uh, social media because that's a standard that we want to get ours up to. I thought that was really, really cool. And you're doing aspirational work. Yeah.
I'm turning.
Well, thank you for putting this together so quickly, I think I gave each one for them to come up with this list and appreciate that. I mean, because it's really interesting to see what people are putting resources and I don't know, as I'm looking, just personal judgment wise, it seems like there's some, maybe too many resources in certain positions in other cities, but you've got a really nice balance of, of roles, uh, in the communications department. I mean, I think the product is, is great. Um, I love the technical, different types of technical work they can do with drones and video and photos and it seems like we cover all sorts of avenues within the city in terms of what we do from trash picker upward, you know? So, yeah, it's, it's neat to see. I mean, as you're looking for this new Jim, asking, are you Emmy, uh, award-winning as part of that, uh, interview question? Because I feel like there's, uh, some big shoes to fill with this role in terms of its quality.
Mm-hmm.
But this is really helpful, so thank you for, for doing that.
One thing that I, um, I forgot to mention too, on the, on the social media stuff is, um, and I won't get into the weeds of it, but there's, um, there's algorithms that each, each, um, media has. So if you post, like Facebook, the algorithm is you pay, you post once a day, uh, but never more than once a day, or you'll fall down in people's timelines. But if you don't post enough, you will also fall down. So, so and Instagram is the same way, you can post as many reels and stories as you want, but if you post too many times on the people's timeline, and there's also the, the problem that you don't want to be unfriended, or you don't want to be blocked or muted either. So, um, where we lost, we lost some people, um, the first quarter. We were trying to examine why was that, you know, you know, try to figure out people's minds, but you want to post just the right amount. So dialing that in is hard. And then Twitter's, Twitter's Twitter right now, so you can't, you know, we lost our blue checkmark. Okay. Um, we might get a gray checkmark for government, so you don't know. Um, so we'll see what happens there, but that was kind of a, a loss because it's nice to be verified, that people know that, you know, you are a government entity and that, you know, what you're talking about is truth, so. There's some weird things going on right now, but we'll kind of go with the flow and see how we do, so.
The other thing that's really cool is it's all very interactive too, especially on the website. The camera's going to be really cool.
Yeah.
In the plowing maps and the development maps and, uh, every road project, it's going to interact.
So, um, from your meeting with the Youth Advisory Council back in, what, what is it, March, April, I can't remember which month, but, um, you were asking for some of their input, et cetera, and then they were asking you of your input. Um, where are you at with, um, the council and, um, working with them?
So, um, Jim was there last night. Um, so he interviewed some of them. So we want to get some messages out about what they are and what they do, what their function is, because they're so new. Um, we want to kind of introduce them to the community, so that, that will be kind of our first step. So he did that interview last night with Courtney's help. So that's sort of our first step. Um, and then we worked on some of the questions, but we'll wait till fall before they'll, before we're going to roll out that survey, so.
Will those, will those videos be ready before the recruitment phase for next year's?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they should be done in the next week.
How? Um, and since they're also, um, working on the mental health issues, et cetera, are they going to use you and Lakeville for some of their communications needs on, on that?
I haven't heard yet.
I think we have the group or myself, we'll have to talk with communications and Tierney on that, but I think they would like to utilize the city website to push that one out. They want to finalize the mental health flyer by the end of June. Um, so I think they wanted to post the library, the city website potentially, um, and schools come next school year.
More questions? Thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I just want to say a few things about Tierney and internal services. She, it's one of those groups that don't get a lot of light of day, but they do a ton of work here on the scenes. And so I just want to tell Tierney, appreciate the work that she does, been here six, six years, and prior to her being here, we had very little social media, very little, uh, anything out there on the web or for a social media platform. So with her background in corporate, uh, media, coming here and picking up where the previous manager left off was, it's just been night and day. And I, I know Justin and I both appreciate it very much, so thank you.
You're good. Thank you. Uh, okay, moving on to, uh, Jerryl with the first quarter financial report.
All right. Preview of a few of the funds, uh, starting with the general fund, um, property taxes, first of all, our biggest, um, one of our largest funding sources in the general fund, we don't receive until June and July and then the end of the year, so we'll see the numbers there. Um, building permits are slightly down, um, first quarter as compared to a year ago, especially in the single family, about eighty-five compared to a hundred twenty. Um, so we're seeing a slight decline in those revenues.
I have one request from you, you do the next, or you will do one more financial report?
Um, I'll make sure, whatever you say is on my mind.
If I could just see a trend more than just one year on the permits, you know, maybe going back five years.
On which ones?
Just on the, on single family town, or just the overall building.
Can add that.
Thank you.
Um, as far as some of the other revenues, um, I do want to point out, it's here. Actually, it's not the revenues, it's more in the expenses that we will personnel, that they are about twenty-four percent of the budget, so they're running pretty close, but we will see in some of the areas that, um, they are coming in under budget in different departments due to vacancies. Um, other expenditures, utilities, um, we are running higher with natural gas costs. Motor fuels are a little higher, but we do have a contract for those. And jumping into some of the specific departments, um, I'll call out the finance department that, uh, we are starting to see, last year we had some ERP costs and consultants and so forth, those are just starting now, so you'll see more comparative information, um, starting in second quarter. Other ones, um, they were higher last year. Um, police, personnel services are below budget due to some employee vacancies. And I guess one general comment I want to make about the personnel also, and I noted it here, is that our workers' comp insurance came in significantly higher, our experience modification changed quite a bit, and of course, we got that information after we had prepared the budget, so it will be about three hundred thousand dollars higher. So.
That's not all the general fund though. Just a number, I mean.
Yeah.
Yes. There are some in the utility funds and so forth. But I wanted to call that out because you'll see that each quarter this year. The streets department, they are also seeing, um, with their personnel, actually the flip, that they have higher costs compared to budget, primarily due to overtime for all the snow events and so forth that we had. Is any other questions on general fund, otherwise I'll jump to the communication. Mayor Halliary, you brought up the franchise fees and of course, I was thinking lease, lease revenues, because we've been talking about those with the auditors. Uh, but the franchise fees, um, as we've discussed this fund, um, over the last couple of years, we've projected in a few years that we're going to have to add property tax levy. Is that as those revenues are declining and the expenses are increasing, that we're going to have to support it with some property taxes. So, but that's a few years out, I don't have the exact year, but just to bring that to your attention again. And the liquor fund, um, sales are up over last year, about four point eight percent. On the expense side, now we're seeing more of the full debt payments associated with the KIPO, where it was a partial, um, debt payments last year. We still have all of the, uh, transfers, um, scheduled for equipment fund and debt service and police stations and so forth. And some capital laid for some improvements at the other locations. In the water fund, you'll recall that we, uh, the council approved the new structure that went into effect February first of this year. And surprisingly, the amount of gallons that we billed, um, were within seven thousand compared to last year. So the revenues are pretty close, just slightly under, it all depends on what tier that they fell into, but we were with the new rate structure, it was not meant to increase the revenues, it was supposed to keep it at a cast-in amount, so it's pretty close to last year. And I list out all the projects that are listed there, quite a few projects listed in the, the water fund, most of those costs will start coming through in the second quarter and future quarters. In the sewer fund, um, we did not have a change in the fee. And, um, same with the street lighting fund, no change in those fees, so nothing related to reporting those two funds. When we get to the environmental resources fund, um, you'll recall that we made a change at the end of the year, moving the forestry division from the environmental resources fund to the general fund. So that was actually one change I should have mentioned in the general fund, that now we have that, um, division to report on. And we did transfer, I think it was about a hundred sixty or a hundred eighty thousand dollars, um, at the beginning of this year, um, to transfer some of those residual funds from the environmental resources fund over to the general fund. And, and for the environmental resources fund, you'll also recall that we did, because we were moving that forestry component to the general fund, we reduced that environmental resources fee as well, for twenty-three. Any questions? It's not a lot of activity first quarter.
No.
We'll see more in.
No, no. Any questions? Thank you, so let's move on to the next item, opioid settlements, I think you guys are tagging me on that, and Commissioner Olber came to just talk about it, or answering questions from what the county is engaging on from opioid. I don't know if you wanted to let them give a presentation and you want to chime in after that, or?
Through the mayor.
Okay, I'll let them give a presentation, I'll let you chime in.
Get in there. All right. Um, so I tried to highlight, um, the three opioid class action lawsuits that impact the city, and, um, there's a lot of information out there and I will say it's, it's challenging to understand exactly what, um, the magnitude of the funds is going to be. And, um, so I estimated based on what documents I came across and, um, don't hold me to it, hopefully there'll be more. Um, we have received some funds, um, some of the lawsuits, um, on the Johnson and Johnson, we've received actually years one and two, about forty-one thousand, I just received notification that the third payment of twenty-one thousand will be coming in in June. And, uh, the next one, the Teva, Allergan, Walgreens and so forth, we actually haven't received any payments on that one yet.
And that's all, all of them we don't know and it's.
We don't know, I couldn't determine what that estimated amount that the city would be receiving.
Okay.
But I did see that it should be over fifteen years. Um, the first one was about six hundred twenty-seven thousand, over eighteen years. Then the third one, the Jansen, um, looking at, and this is again, it's just an estimate, I think about a hundred sixteen thousand over eleven years. And we received five years of payment, we had received the first, actually all five of them at one time, so that was kind of surprising that they, but I think there are some incentives with some of those payments. And then the fourth one is the National Opioid Abatement Trust, of which we received one payment, forty-two hundred, and really, I did not see any information about the length of time that we'd receive payments or the amount.
Sure.
Okay, I want to jump in.
Yeah, so I think in your pack is the entire member memorandum of agreement, uh, which is several pages. We highlighted a few proposed uses that are more closely tied to kind of the public safety area. So connecting people to the help that they need, that's one category, this is, uh, working with those that currently have opioid use disorder or substance abuse disorder coupled with mental health, which is, you know, a lot, a lot of folks, and sometimes we don't always know when we're dealing with folks, what they all suffer from. And so that's connecting those people to the care, so making, making sure they're aligned with, uh, the proper resources, which we are doing a couple of different ways with some of our Dakota County partnerships or crisis response, and then our embedded social worker. Addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, so those are people that are, uh, kind of tangled up with the criminal justice system, so committing crimes, uh, arrests, things like that, that, um, kind of have underlying causes or, or issues of substance abuse and opioid abuse and use. Uh, and, and some of those highlight the co-responder or alternate responder, respondent models. Again, that's, uh, some of the things that we're doing with Dakota County. On the prevention side, um, that's more of your marketing campaigns, public awareness, things like that. Um, and I would envision if we went that route, partnering with certainly our city communication staff, but also possibly schools and things like that. but also possibly schools and things like that. Uh, and then on the prevention side, and, uh, again, it talks about, uh, supporting mobile units that offer or provide referrals for harm reduction, treatment, recovery. Again, that circles back to kind of that embedded social worker, people that are aligning these folks with the resources that can truly help, uh, with their addiction. And then the last one we highlighted here was first responders, and there's some, some very basic language in there, such as law enforcement expenditures related to the opioid epidemic. Uh, but then also, uh, education of law enforcement and first responders, you know, training most likely. Then also wellness and support services for first responders who have been exposed to trauma related to opioid abuse and use. And, uh, so with all of those kind of parameters in place on use, we highlighted some, some areas where we anticipate, uh, working regardless of the funds coming in, especially since we don't have a great grasp of how much and when, and how long this will go on. Uh, so our drug task force agent, from an enforcement standpoint, is our, kind of our point person on, uh, tackling this from intercepting drugs that are coming into our communities. So cartel-related influx of opioids and fentanyl. We have a, a full-time agent, that's a city of Lakeville detective, assigned to that team. So his, you know, salary is included there. Uh, overtime is relatively high, fluctuates a little bit year to year. It's about twenty-five thousand estimated this year for twenty-twenty-three, so that's a fairly significant expense. And then within the last couple of years, participating members of the drug task force have been contributing an annual amount. So for twenty-twenty-three, it was around fifteen thousand dollars. We're expecting that to drop, uh, closer to about four thousand dollars next year. Uh, historically, uh, task force was funded more through forfeitures, and they've gone away from that model, which I think is a good thing. Uh, but to kind of bridge that gap in the meantime, every participating agency kicked in some, uh, some annual dues, so to speak. And then moving outside of the drug task force, I talked about the embedded social worker. We would like to move, uh, our patrol officers full-time to, uh, pair with that social worker and kind of be that liaison. Uh, and so, you know, obviously, we're paying that officer a salary. I believe that would possibly fall into this memorandum of agreement of, of how these funds are used. And then internally, our wellness program, for the last handful of years, we've mandated mental health check-ins for all of our staff. And that's about a fifteen thousand dollar annual expense. Can't really delineate, uh, whether officers were exposed to, you know, trauma-related opioids or whether it was not opioids, but I could, I think we could make a pretty good argument that a lot of, uh, the stuff that we see out there has some basis for, uh, opioid-related issues. And then, uh, again, touching on the public awareness, media campaigns or, uh, uh, community aware, awareness, uh, listening sessions, presentations, things, things like that. We just did one with the schools about a month ago. Sometimes there's not a huge cost that goes with that, but if there is, certainly, that's money could be used in that direction as well. So I think as far as staff, we're just looking for some direction and priority, priorities, and if you'd like us to kind of look to, to steer these dollars.
Is there equipment to purchase also like to protect officers, whether it's like, while I had Narcan, I was, I think, be part of it, but then, is there equipment that related to fentanyl that we need to buy that can be?
Limited, specific to, to the fentanyl or opioids. So the, you talked about the Narcan. We do have Narcan, it's in all of our squads and in our building. We received all of that through a grant, I think it's a state grant, so we didn't pay for that.
And then also, sorry to interrupt, one of the further, one of the newest grants, I think it's the one that Teva, Allergen, CVS, when I think part of that is they're supposed to provide Narcan as well.
Yeah.
And so really, we, uh, medical gloves, masks, uh, you know, they have multiple uses, not just that, but it's not a huge, huge big-ticket expense for us. But it, I mean, you could make the argument, some of those, if we do continue to pay for those out of our budget, some of those expensive.
I just think about all the stuff we used COVID money for, that was like, oh, it's headed.
Yes.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Couple, couple thoughts, comments, um, some input on your question about, um, thoughts about, that, one of the things that strikes me, and I just sort of verified tonight, is this, this still seems pretty fuzzy in terms of how much money, frequently, and in the end, you know, how's that going to look? So it just strikes me, that's kind of hard to plan for, hey, we want to do this, but we really don't know what's coming. So I think whatever we choose to do, however we choose to spend that, um, there's this balance of long-term and one-time. Um, so I think there are some things that we could just commit to. Uh, so that's, that's the one thing. Um, and then the other thing is, is, you know, we mentioned the street piece and, uh, the drug task force, and that is very, very real. I think there's a whole side of this, that is, uh, I get a wisdom tooth out and I get ten pills of oxycodone. I have a hernia surgery and I got ten pills of oxycodone that I don't want to touch because number one, I get better results with Tylenol and ibuprofen, but they're sitting there. Um, so I think some of this is, isn't going to be, um, the criminal on the street that's selling it and using it. It's going to be the household that there's addiction problems because somebody got started. And, um, I think it's important to address both of those. I mean, from my experience, it, I really do, would like to see some of those expenses from enforcing drug incidents, which are a result of the problem. This would be a great way to help that. But I would really love to find some way to hit, um, I know a few years ago in Dakota County, and maybe it's getting on more like ten or twelve ago, uh, there is a startup to try to work with healthcare, um, on this whole addiction piece, because people are, you know, I'm the kid of two doctors. I've got, you know, I have access, and, and it's all under the radar. So, so that's just one piece. So I look at this and I see what you want to do with the schools, and that's really encouraging. I think there's some real potential there, um, to hit the people that aren't going to necessarily, I mean, if you told me to go buy some opioids right now on the street, I would, I might have a couple of those, but I would have, just from past experience, but just as a normal citizen, I wouldn't have a clue where to go, but I do know what my parents keep in their medicine cabinet. Um, so that, I think that's one angle that I should look at. So I think the education piece of the schools, I do think though, that it would be good to use some of this money to help us, you know, we're in the middle, your police officers are in the middle, and I mean, right in the middle of an issue and a problem, and it'd be great to have a way to help, you know, combat that and keep that off the side. So for me, it's something, if we can do something with the community, where we're going to hit people that aren't necessarily, um, seen that, uh, street use and the drug culture. Um, and, uh, so I think maybe this officer liaison with the social worker and the schools are a great place to do that. And then using some of the drug task force to equip them.
Time, Commissioner Holber. Do you want to just give your thoughts on, from a county perspective, where you're focusing your efforts and to make sure we're not overlapping?
So, the county's going to probably end up over the life of this, somewhere in the half a million dollars a year on average. Again, we've gotten a big hunk of money up front, and, you know, it seems a little fluffy, and sort of plugging in exact numbers and exact years. So we're struggling with that same piece. We've had a number of community meetings looking for input. The chief has attended. One of our problems that we're grappling with is that small cities with thirty thousand and under, I think, didn't get any money. And so there, there's going to be a state board with state money, but the small cities are coming to the county and saying, hey, we want some of your money, and we don't know if the state's going to take care of them or whatever. But I think, um, they're looking for us just initially to fund the drug task force, uh, yearly amount. I'm guessing that's going to happen in some way or shape or form in the interim, um, until we kind of get this all sorted out. Um, and of course, over the last couple of years, plenty of new programs that have been started. Staff has said, oh, when we give the opioid money, you could use opioid money to fund this. And, uh, so, you know, having to kind of look at that piece as well. Um, the social worker program currently is funded with, uh, COVID dollars. It doesn't have a long-term funding source. I mean, there's some things that are already in the budget, people seem to like and are effective, that could easily eat up all of the money. So we're kind of swirling as far as how to do this. There is a lot of interest in the prevention piece. Um, you know, they're basically saying that you got to get to kids, and this is the public health realm, so I'm leaving law enforcement, going to public health, and the county being the public health authority for the county. But you need to get kids in the fourth, fifth, sixth grade kind of realm. Parents need help learning how to talk about this. Um, and then some of the early interventions that may in fact, uh, save money in other areas that the county's responsible for. So in other words, early involvement with families with addiction, so we avoid out-of-home placement for kids and interactions, you know, growing in severity with law enforcement and the courts, and if there's some kind of like early family drug intervention kind of thing. Then there has also been discussion of, um, putting together some kind of information kind of piece that could be replicated across the school districts, so that we would kind of do a, I don't know, like a pack-and-play kind of thing, where we, you know, we could set up kind of the basic information, information flyers, community resources in Dakota County to help address some of these, uh, concerns, where to get help, et cetera, that could then be distributed through the schools. And to the, to the point about the drugs in people's homes, I know a couple of years ago, there was, uh, carbon, we talked about, like having it with EMS or even funeral directors. So when they go into these homes of people that have passed, they could, like, leave a kit to say, hey, grandma and grandpa have a bunch of drugs in their cupboard, you don't know what to do with them. You put them in here, they'll make them all inert and, you know, nobody's snooping around the old farmstead or whatever. Fine, you know, you know, which to me seemed like kind of a good idea.
Oh, the biggest is open houses.
What?
The biggest is open houses.
Seriously?
Yeah. And so realtors are starting to carry the bags, and they give them to homeowners so they can dispose their medication before they have a home, uh, an open house.
Or take it with them.
Yeah.
And we do have the prescription drug drop box at the police department, and it gets used a lot.
I was there last week.
Yeah. And it's not, again, it's not a huge expense to us, other than some bags and a little bit of staff time emptying it, but it does get utilized, and try to publicize that.
Would it make sense to maybe have a conversation with some of the pharmacies in the community about expanding that a little bit and see if they're willing to do some drug takeback in partnership with us, whether they have?
Do drugs smell at home?
Yeah, whether they, using some of the funds to help promote that. I think, hi, when I went to Hy-Vee, Dan would know. I think they started doing take-back, but I don't know if CVS or...
Well, Walmart does. They got one right, right at the front of the pharmacy.
And just in closing, we also have a, a survey up that's live now. We're asking for input from the community, is what they'd like to see us spend, um, the money in, in Dakota County. So, and back to the drug task force, everybody but Invergro Heights is in the drug task force. So we've asked our other chiefs to put some pressure on Invergro, because it would be a lot easier to make county investments in that operation, if you will, if everybody was a part of it, which the irony is, is that their house is in Invergro Heights, and the smartest matter.
Dan, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to follow up on your point. Uh, we do have those drop boxes in all of our pharmacies. I, I think you probably do see that a lot of the chain stores.
Oh, you do? Okay. Maybe we'll, maybe we use some of the funds to promote that a little bit.
Okay, chief, I got a really dumb question. I really don't know much about opioids, but, um, you know, you're talking about prescription drugs, but aren't they created too? Aren't they ma, man-made? Meaning that they're not coming out of a pharmaceutical? Um, but so I guess my point is, and that's usually where the fentanyl overdoses are taking place, aren't they putting the fentanyl into the man-made, um, drugs? Rather than, I mean, I realize, I would hate to encourage kids to suddenly look into their appearances. Uh, you know, they've opened up that medicine cabinet and not thought twice about what was in there, just by educating them, almost encouraging them to use those. But I, I would like to see us move in the direction where we're educating them on man-made products that are not made from a drug company, and the dangers, um, that come from that, because just because you bought it the week before doesn't mean the next week it's not deadly. You know, some of, I'd like to see them scared to death. I mean, the person, you know, gets upon, but, um, educated that way, that they realize that these products, um, that are being created are not regulated, and that they're coming from bad people. I, if we could, if we could make the point of how, trying to find the, oh, a bad, a word, but I'm thinking wicked, cartels are, and, um, and that even though it doesn't sound like a very good business model, that they're killing off their customers per se, they really don't care. They're more interested in selling as much product as they possibly can. And if, you know, if we could just get more into the evils of what is behind the , um, sources of these, um, things that are killing the youth, just even the first time they even try to try it. And, um, there's, you know, all kinds of parent groups out there that have been formed across the nation to try to bring, um, for some of the education. And I don't know if, you know, just being able to take some of these funds, and I don't know if it would apply, but to be able to bring those speakers in, um, those moms, dads are very, um, effective when they're talking about their families and, and how it's destroyed their family. So.
Yeah, and they're our national, like one pill can kill, there's a national. So that's the other part of this, is as, as we get a year or two into it, remember this money's going nationwide. So we're not going to have to reinvent, I mean, there's going to be a whole industry or market, if you will, there, right? I mean, there's going to be people chasing this money. There's more state grant money for Milox, Senna, Narcan. Um, so I think that's kind of licked as far as grants and state money. Um, so I think as this is going to evolve, um...
That's what we're fighting with, you know, from a training standpoint, is there's training out there, but it's not costing us anything, because it's all funded through the same pool of money, right? Uh, so in some ways, it's hard to, hard to spend the money at times, but, uh, Councilmember woke to your point. I, I think really, in my opinion, the answer is attacking it from all these angles, because we are, you know, the cartel piece is really our drug task force. That's really their approach, is to really go after that source of this synthetically-made, uh, opioids and fentanyl that's being, you know, manufactured, uh, south of the border, shipped up here, and intercepting that whole pipeline. But there is a big need on the awareness side from fill, fill bottles in, in the home and kids starting there and then getting addicted and then graduating to more, uh, more of the stuff where they don't know what they're, what they're taking. So I really think hitting it from different angles is important and not neglecting any one of those. I think, I think it's a good approach to try to, try to get it from, from every way that we can, really.
Have you had a conversation with the school districts, all three of them, sick? Has there been an event you wanted to do that you haven't been able to pay for?
More so, we've had it with Lakeville schools, um, and, you know, we did the forum a month ago. We did have a, a mother on our panel who lost a child to a, an opioid overdose. Uh, it was a powerful story. She's a really good speaker, able to, to share her story publicly. Uh, I think those, those stories are important. Um, but we, we've worked with schools after the, to say, you know, what's next? Let's not just leave it at this, what are our next steps? And it's just like any kind of marketing, how can we target the people that really, you know? We have people showing up, but a lot of the... We have people showing up, but a lot of times it's the people that are already on top of this stuff they're aware of. So how do we get to those people that, that are really struggling with this? That we're all trying to ask those questions.
Yeah, I think education about take back is just so important because to your point, so many people have an opioid from three, four years ago, just sitting in the closet. Or yeah, you know, you know, I think, but you know, like I think in part of its industry too, I know the University of Minnesota has stopped prescribing opioids for dental procedures. So, you know, some education maybe into our healthcare community would be helpful too.
We'll just have to do a better job of tracking our internal efforts on this or tracking the time, I should say.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if we put together a communications campaign, you know, how much time Tyrion puts on that or
True.
Okay, well, guys, so we'll just have to figure out a way to be able to track that so we can justify it.
All right. I mean, I, I've been doing these things for years, unfortunately, for a variety of reasons. And, I mean, the meeting last month, eighty percent of the people there were excused upon, but the usual suspects. People that have been coming to these things for years. The few that faces that were new, I mean, there was like, oh, good. The, you know, the one overdose in the school that came from St. Paul. Or I mean, it was like, there's, I don't know how, part of the thing is, is that, you know, this has been the case for decades and it's probably very common. I think a lot of parents don't realize that it's here or they don't want to know it's here or it will never be their child. And I think that, I don't know how you get past that hurdle, like there's still a level of stigma.
You know, are programs like DARE still happening in schools?
No, we don't have an at DARE in Lakeville for quite a number of years. I think it still exists in some places, not very many anymore. I don't remember why, why it was phased out when it was.
Was proved to be not effective in stopping drug use. It was really good for developing good relationships with law enforcement. But there was, in the statistical analysis, it was maybe even counter to reducing drug use because they learned so much about it, they get curious. You know, so.
That's half my point though, is I'm trying to figure out a way to get them beyond the curious and to the point where they're scared to be curious.
Yeah, I think, and these are great, we can keep that shit out. I will say the one thing that from my parents' perspective is that I always thought was eye opening was the trailer that's set up like a bedroom to understand where kids can hide drugs and those type of things. So figuring out more ways to get through that, oh, it's not going to be my kid thing. And whether it's people like Dave Baker, who, you know, his son was an athlete, got hurt. People like that who can come and talk about sharing their story, I think is helpful from the, the public standpoint.
Well, I think identifying all the resources in Dakota County is going to be really vital. I mean, there's AA meetings and NA meetings for parents of addicts. There's the woman that you referred to, there was a whole write-up about her in the paper. I think it was Mother's Day weekend about what she's accomplishing and how you talk to kids in a non-confrontative way to keep dialogue open. I mean, there's a whole evolution around drug use, around are you, you know, tough? You know, bottom out, hard love, you know, or do you, you know, keep them alive as long as possible, hoping at some point they, you know, I mean, it's, there's so much confusing stuff out there. It's no surprise that people don't know what to do with.
Yeah, it'd be good to use our resources for education. But I, I also think, you know, focusing on at least part of the salary requirements for the joint task force makes a ton of sense too. Other thoughts?
Yeah, to your point, I don't disagree with any of your recommendations or, so, I mean, if we could fund all of them with this money, that'd be great. If not though, I mean, youth prevention is kind of, or I think I'm hearing from a lot of folks, is kind of one of the bigger priorities.
And, you know, you start looking at academics and you start looking at, you know, what my future is. And not, it's not all, hey, I want to take drugs, I'm going to try drugs, so it's, I just got to get past this week of finals. And I have a friend that has a couple of pills that are going to help me do that. And that's where it starts and it just starts. So whatever we can do for education is, is I think huge.
I guess the other thing is I'm, I'm concerned about the safety of our officers too. As it keeps increasing, they're at risk every time they come across this stuff. It's just scary to see some of the videos that I've seen, you know, on TV or whatever, an officer opens up the back of a, you know, vehicle and suddenly collapses because they just breathed in the dust of fentanyl. You know, and so, you know, whatever we can do to help with, we could mention equipment, but I, I don't know, there has to be a way to keep you safer because you're, you're coming across this more and more and they're, you know, and I suppose that's part of the training. But if, if there were something developed besides Narcan to help prevent the accident from happening, I'd certainly want to make sure that our police department had access to that.
Yeah, and I don't disagree there. I mean, they do train a lot on proper evidence procedures. We have Narcan, Narcan where we package evidence and we go through all that, just in case something happens there. I'm not aware of any equipment, you know, preventative equipment that's out there to completely take that risk out of it a hundred percent. But I know they try to search in ventilated areas, do, do what they can with that in mind. Sometimes you just don't know when that moment hits where you open something up and there's, there's power there, but it is dangerous. Point.
Good. Thank you for that input and we'll now move on. Alan, with your update on Vision Lakeville.
I'll do the first part and then I'll throw it over to Courtney and Sheldon on the survey. So if you remember back in March, you pointed the task force. And since then, we have scheduled the first task force meeting to be on May 30th, that's next Tuesday. The next step in the process then after that is city council. Craig Rapp has or will be contacting you to interview each of you between June 2nd and June 9th. So kind of if you get a call from Craig Rapp, that's what it's about. He wants to take a few moments to just ask you a few questions and kind of go through kind of a discussion of what you guys envision for the future of Lakeville. After that, we will do department director's workshop. That'll be on June 12th, that's Monday. That'll be part of our normal director's meeting. And again, Craig Rapp will come in and he'll facilitate that workshop with our department directors. And then the main item I wanted to discuss tonight with city council was the joint advisory commission workshop. There are five Mondays in July. And we felt that perhaps the July 31st Monday, we would be, we'd schedule that joint boards of commissions with council and boards of commissions can all attend that. And again, that would be facilitated by Craig Rapp that Monday, that Monday night on July 31st. And we'd start that at a normal time of 6:30 and we'd probably hold that in the city council chambers just because it's a larger group and do it that way. So with that, they work for everyone. We'll keep moving forward with scheduling meetings if that's set in rolling. That Monday night? That's, yeah, July 31st, Monday, 6:30.
And that's all existing commissions, not the appointed task force?
Well, that would be a question for you. Does city council, would you mind if the task force attended that? Again, that
No, I think you should.
Do you want them to participate or to listen?
I, yeah.
I was going to say, that's a lot of voices for that one meeting.
I think it would be helpful for them to be there to listen, to, to just kind of absorb what the room is saying. They can, the discussion I had with Craig Rapp today with the possibility of the task force attending that joint meeting. I mean, then they can go back and that's part of the information that they can all discuss at the next task force meeting.
And you'll record that then too for, just in case some of those, I mean, then they can reference that material later when they, instead of just looking at their notes, they can actually go to the, back to the recording of the meeting itself.
Yep. So we'll invite them as guests and we'll have, you know, guest seats set up for them. We'll have nameplates for the other boards of commission members so that they kind of have a place to sit. It'll be very similar to like we did when we did EDC and PC and council. Kind of set up in a U shape. And that's it. I mean, that's just kind of a general update on where we're at in the vision Lakeville process. And there'll be a little bit of a lull between the first task force meeting that we'll have next Monday and the next one, which would be tentatively somewhere in August, mid, mid, late August. Because from Monday until a task force meeting in August will be the data collection phase. So that's when we're holding all these other meetings and then the survey will be, will come in during that time. So we are looking at creating some kind of homework or something for the task force to do in that period, just to kind of keep them engaged. So there's that whole two months between task force meetings, there's only a month. We're working with Craig Rapp and we'll kind of circle back around, let you guys know what we do for that for the task force. But it'll be some kind of homework or some kind of survey that they could take back to their individual groups that they represent and kind of give some individual, but directly to them, which they can then bring to the task force. So I'll hand it over to Courtney and she can update you on the survey.
All right. So the survey timeline got pushed back just a little bit. I don't have the most updated timeline, but the one, the, I guess the most updated one that I have is that the data collection would begin on May 19th. So obviously we're past that a little bit. Where they're at right now is they have sent all of the materials over to be printed. And then they're going to be sent out, the first postcard is going to be sent out to 3,000 households. They have that all mapped out. The reason for the bit of delay was tracking zip codes. They were able to do that without asking a question on the survey. And then they finalized all of the custom questions as well. So I've been working with Tyrionie and Barb on kind of pushing that out on social media. So folks know when to look for that and we'll, I'll continue to work with them on that as well.
Very nice. Okay. Other questions or?
And then there's a business survey that's going to go along that too. Paul Coles doing that and Tina, it's the net efforts.
Very good. Good job, guys. All right, moving on to items for future discussion. Oh, we got John.
Oh, wait, no, no, I was, I was thinking.
You ready for a committee update?
Yeah.
Now, go ahead, committee updates.
Okay. Y'all start off, Pier Lake Airport, our next advisory commission meeting is June 8th. This will actually be out at the Pier Lake Airport at the, their new building, Loft Aviation Building. So we're excited about that.
Cool.
Yeah. And then DCC, Dakota 911, met, we met on Thursday. The big thing we did there was we approved the budget for 2024. Couple of highlights, it's a 9.3% increase from the previous one. Mostly personnel, which was not surprising. The fixed costs, the county pays 50% of that. The fixed costs are about 20% of the budget, the county pays about 50% of that. We had an arrests in there, so we just had some conversations about capital improvements and how do we best figure out how to start saving for those. There's a couple of things coming up in the next couple, few years that we want to take a look at. So that was that meeting.
How were they from a staffing, do they have, I know at one point they were so short-staffed.
They, yes, I wouldn't say so short-staffed, authorized for 853, now 45 now. Yeah, and it's a constant, constant, constant struggle. And then the other thing we talked about, and it's part of the increases, it's going to help salary structure when you look at comparable dispatch centers and staffs.
How does it train somebody?
Six months. Yeah. So you hire somebody and you really don't gain a number for six months and then you hope that somebody else does.
Or you get four months down and
Right, and then they just
Yeah, yeah, this isn't for me. Yeah. Very dumb job.
Uh, other
You know, far as busy as it feels like, events and ribbon cuttings and all of those appearances have been, I haven't had any committee meetings since our last work session.
The only one that I had was the arenas. And we had a great groundbreaking ceremony and I'm excited to have that project kick going here. Probably the, obviously after you guys saw the budget approved at the school district of two and then we approved the budget, probably the only other thing that they're looking into is that there are some change orders for the project that are quite large because they weren't, one was because it wasn't included in the actual bid. So between Joe and our city staff, they'll look into that and see if there's some accountability that can, that somebody else pick up some of that cost maybe. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know what'll happen when they look into it. But it's roughly between two change orders, roughly around $60,000. So that's a chunk of change. So the project will keep moving forward and it's not going to stop anything, but just be aware on that. And then there's still some more investigative work to be done on the energy savings. But because the amount of energy savings is what is going to be applied to the arena's debt. And so there's still some questions on the accuracy from the company's data and our data as to whether or not we are receiving all the energy savings that we thought we were going to.
Yeah, I remember that conversation years ago and it was supposed to be pretty robust.
It's supposed to be about $60,000 a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's hard to, I don't know if we did a good enough job on the baseline as we changed the, the systems in a couple of ways that are really going to skew it, so.
Okay. Other updates? Dan, did you have any updates? I just had a, EDC meeting got canceled last month, so I don't have an update there either. We're meeting tomorrow. Regional council and mayors last month, we talked a lot about census and how we are not ruining as a state. And there's, yeah, there's some alarm from the people who pay attention to that on a daily basis. That was interesting conversation and I think that's it. Did you have any updates?
So real quick, a couple of items that were going to be on this agenda, so it got short kind of in the last minute. We're going to be discussing a proposal from the county on taking over absentee voting operations for all the cities. That kind of got, that got pulled up at the last minute and still needs some work, so that'll be a discussion coming later. And then we're going to bring another discussion about use of the ALC. We are probably going to go into a closed session on, after your meeting on the 5th to talk about the real estate acquisition on that. So we're going to have a closed session on that, but we'll have to limit the discussion to that.
So just a transaction.
Transaction. So we have a, a pretty good handle on the draft purchase agreement at this point, so.
Okay. Any other updates?
Oh, I should also notice, the finance director of Palestine did close a week ago. And so we are in the process of, I think we're going to offer 10 candidates a chance to do a semifinal interview round. The recruiter's doing that, it'll be a Recruiting that will be a virtual interview, a video interview, and then we'll review that and then bring that in down to a smaller number. We spoke with personnel committee and the personnel committee agreed that they would sit in on, on those interviews.
Good.
We'll have a staff panel as well as Harry Fick and Tammy Omdahl both honored to, to sit in as well as an outside perspective. So.
Yeah.
Forty-eight applicants total, I think.
Wow, that's wild. That's really good.
Wow.
That's a lot. That's forty-four more than I thought we were going to get.
A lot of Lakeville finance people think they
Oh, yeah, that's true. All right. Well, I will then take a motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned. Thank you, everybody.